Hello, everyone. I'm Nadia Lopez, the San Jose City Hall reporter for San Jose Spotlight. And welcome to the second night of our two-night election 2020 candidate forums. Tonight, you'll hear from the candidates running for San Jose City Council in districts 2, 4, 6, and 10. Thank you to Create TV for hosting us in your San Jose studio and recording tonight's forum. We thank our audience for attending tonight's forum and ask that you refrain from any disruptions while the video is recording. We ask our audience to not clap, boo, or disrupt candidates while they are responding to questions from the moderator. We will take questions from the audience if time permits. The forum will be aired on Bay Voice TV on cable channel 27, and an article and video recording of the forum will be made available on our website, sanjosespotlight.com. So, tonight's ground rules. Candidates will get one minute for an opening statement, followed by one minute to respond to each question. All candidates will be asked the same questions and will be allowed 30-second rebuttals at the moderator's discretion. There will be no closing statements. Loanne will keep track of the time. So now, let's get started with San Jose City Council District 6, which covers Shasta Hatchet, Rose Garden, and Willow Glen, and is currently held by Councilmember Dev Davis, who is being challenged by the candidates on this stage. So, would you like to begin with your opening statements?
Sure. Thank you. Hello, I'm Councilmember Dev Davis, and I've represented District 6 residents for the past three years on the San Jose City Council. I have focused on many issues, including planning, housing, homelessness, transportation, public safety, the environment, and many of these issues are interconnected. For example, we have a proposed Google project near the Deardon station at the same time that we're electrifying Caltrain, and that brings together all sorts of issues: our community, our community amenities, public spaces, parks, as well as transportation, the environment, economic development, and many others, and housing, of course. There is so much more work for us to do, and we want someone who is -- you want someone in office who is well-versed in all of these issues and understands how they interconnect and how best to be collaborative with the community and best represent our neighborhoods. That's why I'm asking for your vote in the March 3 election.
Hey, everyone. My name is Jake Tonkel, and I decided to run for San Jose City Council because I think we need honesty and transparency in our local government. What we have now, the status quo, is not working for a majority of residents in District 6 or across the city of San Jose. It's a challenge for many families to continue to live here. I've talked with so many small businesses that are having trouble paying rent and are looking at leaving, and it's really heartbreaking. What I think we can do, what I know I can do as a returned Peace Corps volunteer, as a biomedical engineer, is look at policy in a way that understands the intersectionality of our affordable housing crises, our environmental issues, and our needed city services. For the last year and a half, I've been working strictly in community finance and public banking, trying to figure out the best ways that we get quality services, great schools, and good parks for our communities without having to raise taxes. And that's why I think I deserve your vote.
Hello, my name is Marshall Woodmansey. I'm a community organizer, climate activist, and lifelong District 6 resident. I'm running for City Council to create a more livable future for San Jose. I will fight for the rights of every person to housing, transportation, clean air, open land, and more. In order to secure these rights, San Jose must take climate action. In doing this, we will protect generations to come of San Joseans. We will provide a better opportunity for our young people in our community. We will house those that are currently unhoused and struggling with paying rent, and so much more. As the youngest person sitting up here, I am looking the farthest into the future and ensuring that my life in San Jose will be a good life. Thank you, and it would be an honor to have your support on March 3.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Boone. I currently make a living as a stagehand. I'm represented by the International Association of Theatrical Stage Employees Local 16. Our multiple crises, catastrophes in housing, transportation, and climate change didn't just fall out of the sky. They are caused by intentional human decisions, mostly by the San Jose City Council's decisions. A narrow 6-5 majority backed by corrupt corporate interests is consistently making bad decisions that result in extremely high housing costs, traffic jams, and high levels of pollution, and a dangerous city to live in. Over 50 people have been killed in car crashes already this year, four years after the City Council unanimously passed a Vision Zero plan to reduce car crash deaths to zero. We need to make good decisions. We need to implement ideas that have been put in place all over the world. These are surmountable problems, but they will not be overcome with candidates like Dev Davis, who continually refuse to listen to the public and refuse to implement ideas that work.
Hi, I'm Ruben Navarro, longtime resident of District 6. My roots go back over 40 years. I'm running again for City Council on the request of many of the community. Full disclosure, I'm only speaking as myself, not as Commissioner of the City of San Jose for the Housing Department. But I've been a longtime resident. My roots do go back. I've been volunteering as a coach, and I've been working with many kids in our community, which gave me a chance to talk to many of the parents and families. And the biggest concern that they have is that instead of homelessness and crime getting better, it's gotten worse. And at the request of many people in my community, I decided to jump into this race. And the reason why is because the last time, a lot of people believed in my vision, that neighborhoods should have a voice, that they should have a say in what happens in their community, and that the city leaders should be paying attention, listening to them for guidance. I'm asking for your support and vote once again because a lot of you believe in my vision of what our future should really be like and the prosperity that our communities need. Thank you.
All right. Well, on to the first topic of homelessness. San Jose saw a 42% spike in homeless residents in the last two years, despite voters approving a $950 million bond for affordable housing. Why isn't the problem improving, and what new solutions do we need to try? Jake?
The challenge with our current unhoused population is really about rent control and people being able to afford what happens when they lose their job or have some medical emergency for themselves or their parents. And until we have a society, a city, that's addressing how much people are being paid, living wages, emergency costs, we're really going to struggle to keep people from becoming homeless, even though we're putting in what we think are strong solutions and building affordable housing. Protecting tenants' rights is a huge part of it, but the other aspect is that we continue to see our unhoused community as people that we can tell to wait or to move. We take their stuff and we throw it away, and we spend tens of thousands of dollars to do it, rather than building relationships with our neighbors that are unhoused, asking them, "How can we best support them?" and providing those services.
The future of affordable housing in San Jose will be small, sustainable, and affordable. By that, I mean our current solutions for affordable housing, high-rise, high-density, will not be nearly enough for our housing needs in our future. The city of San Jose is spending upwards, sometimes $100,000, to subsidize affordable housing units. That number is egregious to what we could be doing if we really scaled down what affordable housing looked like. High-density, low-rise, co-living, utilizing our R1 units to become co-living units, prioritizing the needs of the community even before they become homeless and unhoused and after they are unhoused. Personally, my peers are suffering from unhoused at a very high rate, especially in our universities. To address their needs, we have to change our solutions, really scale down what we want to see as affordable housing.
Just like all of our other multiple catastrophes in this city, the unhousedness catastrophe is a result of decisions made by the City Council. We only need to look at other cities and regions for solutions that work, and it's well-known by experts all over the world that the only thing that works is to provide housing to people who don't have housing for free. We have a huge amount of wealth. We have billions of dollars locked up in giant corporations and wealthy individuals that we could invest in providing housing for everyone, no questions asked. This is what works, and this is what we need to do. It's never being proposed by any member of the City Council to just provide housing for everyone. That needs to be a principle, first of all. Provide the housing. We know better how to help people once they are housed. There's no reason anyone needs to live outside on the streets. That's a cruel policy that Dev Davis supports.
This is a very important issue for me because I have experienced homelessness. I do know how it feels like to sleep in your car and go through a freezing night. This is very important. But the solution, there's a two-pronged solution. Is one, increase the number of housing units that are out there. But what we have to focus is make sure we're not building luxury units, because the only thing that does is create a higher demand for the affordable units. And also, what we have to be doing is, in the last two years, we had almost 2,000 homeless -- the number of homeless people increased, and about 80% of them were currently housed beforehand. That means that our city leaders allowed this number of homelessness to increase when it could have been prevented, and we actually took the initiative and make sure we kept people housed. The solution is simple: increase housing and make sure we prevent people from going homeless. Thank you.
Our homelessness problem is not just ours in San Jose. It is a nationwide problem in almost every city in the country, and it's been decades in the making. In the nine-county region of the Bay Area, we have a very critical housing supply problem. There are a million units of housing that should have been built over the last 35 years that do not exist. It's going to take decades to get out of the problem, unfortunately, because it was decades in the making. That's compounded by the issues that people who are unhoused deal with, a lot of times mental illness, a lot of times addiction. So, we are building permanent supportive housing with that $950 million in partnership with the county, but building permanent housing takes time. And we do have a housing-first strategy in the city of San Jose and in the county of Santa Clara. Everybody's on board with that. Everybody is wanting to house people permanently as much as possible. In the meantime, we have to do interim solutions, and we're putting more money toward prevention now because we've learned through a pilot program, and we're learning a lot from other cities, but also through our own pilot programs, that it actually takes less money to keep a family housed than it is to rehouse them after they become homeless.
So...
Excuse me, can I say something?
Sure.
Can we please stop stigmatizing homelessness and associating it with drug addiction and mental health? The numbers don't indicate that that's the majority, so can we please do that moving forward? The statistics show that it's in the low 30s percent, so nowhere is that the majority. Thank you.
All right. Well, as a segue to our next topic, on to mental health. Mental health services fall under the county's purview, but some city officials say resources seem to be significantly lacking to address the need. Do you support Laura's Law, which would compel certain individuals to get treatment? What else should the county do to address a shortage in resources? Who'd like to start off?
Take this one away. Mental health is a major issue, and as a young person, my generation, you know, I've seen it a lot in our public schools, the depression, the addiction, and the anxiety that travels with you throughout your life. The Silicon Valley is notorious for monumental stress on people of all ages, and it leads to a lot of really nasty things in life that, if not addressed quickly, can lead to some really serious consequences. Whether or not we need to mandate the mental health checks of at-risk people is questionable, but we do need to de-stigmatize mental health checkups. We need to support nonprofits that do low-cost mental health checkups. We need to encourage it in our schools, our public libraries, our public institutions. And I firmly believe that proper mental health starts at a young age.
I do not support the implementation of Laura's Law in Santa Clara County. We do not need to force people into a place where they can't get out of. That's not a solution to helping people with serious mental illness. We already have 51-50. We already have a mechanism that compels seriously mentally ill people to receive treatment. What we need to do is invest in more counselors, more clinicians. We're simply underfunding the problem, just like lots of other problems in San Jose. Absolutely, our budget is a disaster. The City Council makes almost no effort to raise revenues, and so we are stuck underfunding things. With a healthier budget, we can pay for doctors, we can pay for counselors. We need to hire the same number of people that's adequate to address the issue. I do not support Laura's Law. Thank you.
If we look at our current infrastructure in regards to mental health, which I take very, very serious, people that aren't homeless, people that in the middle class have difficulty getting mental health, there's long lines for -- when I talk to many families, because I do get to meet a lot of people in the community, it is very, very expensive, and it's very hard to even have your own children see a mental health professional. It's going to take a lot, a lot of resources to implement a program like that. But again, it is the reason we do not lock up people that have mental health issues because they're protected by their First Amendment.
A 51-50 is very different from Laura's Law. 51-50 is a 72-hour hold. It does not include compulsory participation in mental health services. That's what Laura's Law will do, and I support it. Also, I just want to make sure to clear things up. The county provides social services, such as mental health services. The city is not tasked with, nor do we get any funding from the state to do those kinds of services. That is a county service. I support Laura's Law because we need comprehensive solutions to homelessness. Some people, and it's not in the low 30s, mental health and drug addiction problems, about half of homelessness, per the last homelessness census in San Jose, have one of these issues. And that's understandable because being on the streets is stressful, and it's hard, and drug addiction can lead to psychosis, and having a mental illness can lead to wanting to treat it with drugs and alcohol, self-medicating. So, we can understand why these things happen, but we need to put the tools in place to get people the help they need.
I would like to rebut.
Okay.
Should I go first?
Oh, how about you go first? Yeah.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no worries. I don't support Laura's Law. I really believe, and I think our county studies and our city studies on homelessness show that Ruben is right. It's about 80% of people that go unhoused because of job loss or family issues, divorce, et cetera. The data that Councilwoman Davis is talking about is the people that are unhoused. So, that 30%, that's the difference between the 20% of folks who might have had some mental health issues prior to becoming homeless, is a result of homelessness, and that's why those tenant protections, that's why reduction in income inequality, that's why the city of San Jose can commit to providing all those secondary help and assistance to people so that the county can focus on what the county needs to focus on, which is that direct mental health. But I don't think anyone up here would argue that having a well-paying job and a quality school with quality counselors isn't going to be something that helps mental health.
Yeah.
A 51-50 is locking someone up against their will. A 72-hour hold is holding someone for 72 hours, and once you're in, the doctors can decide to hold you longer. That's not an appropriate way to deal with mental illness at all. We need to prevent people from getting so -- in such a desperate situation in the first place. We need more counselors, and we need more clinicians, and we need to address the root causes of mental illness. It's born out of desperation. We're not providing a way for people to make a living. Half the people are desperate for food and for shelter in San Jose. That's what we need to address first.
Dev, do you want to respond to that?
I think it is important to have prevention. Obviously, we want to prevent any mental illness, but the fact of the matter is, we have had a deficit of mental health care in this community and really nationwide for almost my entire lifetime, and we have to deal with what we have right now. And so, you have to triage in some cases.
All right. So, on to the next topic of public safety. Many District 6 residents have expressed a concern with property crime and a lack of police response. Given the police department's limited resources, how would you tackle the rise in crime throughout the district? Andrew?
Thank you. I believe the root causes of crime are the fact that so many people just don't have other opportunities to make a living. Why would somebody make a living out of stealing things if they could be paid more to do something that they would prefer to do? We blame people for stealing things. We blame people. We call them criminals. That's not appropriate. We're just covering over the symptoms. What causes these things? Everything has a cause. This is called the truth of causality. Problems just don't appear out of nowhere. People don't steal and kill people just like randomly. It all has a cause, and our society is based on inequality, is based on racism and sexism, and the San Jose City Council is not addressing these root causes. We need to, first of all, make alleviating poverty our highest priority. That means providing job opportunities for people, quality education for everyone, no matter what neighborhood you grew up in. We continue to create an underclass and then expect people to, everyone, follow the rules. The right way is to address head-on inequality and poverty.
The reality is that the correlation of the increase in crime that even just a few hours ago, the notification that UPS driver got robbed at gunpoint, and the fact is that we lost many of our police officers. Once we started attacking the pensions of the police officers, there was a mass exodus, and the culmination of a lot of police officers retiring at the same time was just a big catastrophe for our city. The fact that the solution to reducing crime, regardless of what happened in the past and we're moving forward, it's not going to help us by trying to hire new recruits to fill those empty positions that are available in the police department. What we have to do is attract police officers to come work for San Jose. We have to incentivize other officers from other departments to want to come to San Jose because the criminals know out there that there's such a long response time that they could pretty much rob a UPS truck at gunpoint and know that the police don't have the manpower to get there on time.
We have increased our numbers of police officers by almost 300 in the time that I've been in office, and just this last budget cycle, we added a Hire Ahead program to continue to make sure that we have all of our budgeted positions filled, whether there are retirements or people departing for other places. But we have been able to fill academies for the last three years. I think we've done three academies each year, and we are doing more and more lateral hires, which is what Ruben was talking about, getting other police officers in from other departments. But there's a lot more that we can do and that we are doing. We actually just started a crime -- or a car break-in prevention program. We got some money from the state for that. And I just want to make sure people know about Neighborhood Watch and also about crime prevention through environmental design, which is a program for businesses, to have crime prevention specialists come. I cannot overstate the importance of those programs and getting everyone involved in crime prevention.
Preventing our continued increase in crime in the city of San Jose is absolutely a twofold approach. We have to address the inequality that is happening in our community. San Jose is now, according to some of the most recent statistics, the most unequal city in the United States of America, and that absolutely has an effect on what our neighbors are really feeling. I've talked to thousands of residents at this point, and many of them are incredibly supportive of community-based policing models. The idea that we have relationships with officers that are continually coming by through the same neighborhoods to do preventative policing tactics, to build relationships with those that are coming by so that those neighbors are trained on how to respond and know the officers that are coming through theirs.
All right, Marshall. This is coming towards the end of our segment, so how would you like to conclude?
We have to have a short- and long-term goals in creating public safety. The long term being really caring for the young people in our community, which I know I sound like a broken record, but that is one thing that I hold very true and dear to my heart. I have seen a lot of the issues that come with the -- now that we don't have teen centers in our communities, our young people have less and less to do every day, and more and more vices. You know, I'm a public school student, and I've really seen that happen, and I really wish we could do more about that. Now, in the short term, call me archaic, but we need to increase ties with our neighbors. Knowing your neighbors and understanding the patterns of your friends, your people near you will better help you to notice when something is out of place. I congratulate Dev Davis on her work on making block parties free. I think that's a great resource that more people need to utilize, and I think we should do education campaigns on the importance of community ties.
All right. Well, thank you all so much for joining us, and we appreciate your time, and that concludes this segment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nadia.
Now, let's welcome to the stage the candidates for San Jose City Council District 2. This seat, which covers Edenvale and Blossom Valley, is currently held by Councilmember Sergio Jimenez, who is challenged by rival Jonathan Fleming. Would you like to begin with your opening statement?
I would, I would. First and foremost, thank you so much for being here. I very much appreciate the invitation. You know, as I've said before, I think only in this city is my story even possible. An immigrant from this -- from Mexico coming into the 10th-largest city in the United States many years ago, and now helping to lead it in a very good and positive direction. Now, I've been living in District 2 for 20-plus years, contrary -- or in contrast to my opponent, who's been there about 20 weeks. I've shown a very sincere commitment from the beginning, long before I decided to actually run for office, when I was on the Parks Commission for six and a half years, starting a neighborhood association, and that commitment has continued on to working on things such as Coyote Valley, such as the substation, such as Union Pacific. The work continues. There's a lot of things left to do, and I look forward to earning the support from all the District 2 residents.
Hello, District 2. My name is Jonathan Fleming, and we need change now. We're worse off today than we were four years ago. Homelessness is up 52%, crime is up 20%, and trust in our local government's at an all-time low. Our taxes are higher than ever, and every election, more of our money is taken to fund programs that just do not work. I'm an engineer. I design fiscally responsible solutions for a living. I received a recognition from U.S. Senator Udall for saving American lives in combat through my engineering design. I started a neighborhood association, a district leadership group, and was elected vice chair of the San Jose Neighborhood Commission. I want to work for you to eliminate bureaucracy at City Hall and to fight for increasing safety, for solving homelessness in our housing crises, for protecting Proposition 13, opposing new taxes. I want to make sure that our parks and our environment is clean, and I also want to make sure that we unite as opposed to divide. So, everybody that has supported our campaign so far, our volunteers, our donors, we love you, we thank you so much. Happy holidays, everybody, and check out votefleming.com.
All right. So, on to the first topic of homelessness. District 2, which includes Edenvale and Blossom Valley, has the fewest affordable housing developments in the city. How would you deal with NIMBYs who refuse to allow affordable housing in District 2? Jonathan, do you want to start?
Yeah. You know, NIMBY is an interesting word, and I think that there are a lot of neighbors out there that get branded NIMBY, and in reality, they are worried about their safety. You know, we have a problem in our city where we're not -- we don't communicate like we should. Policy 630 is not followed. People are taken by surprise. People, you know, they need to be educated, they need to have the facts, and when you don't have the facts, it's hard to feel great about a project coming into your area, you know, and that's a major issue. We need to focus on not enabling, but we need to focus on solving homelessness. We need to look at solutions that have been developed. In other areas, like Rhode Island, for example, Rhode Island has a program where they go --
Rhode Island has a program where they go ahead and address the underlying conditions, which are usually drug abuse, alcohol abuse, and mental illness. And they help people get sober. And then they put them into rehabilitation for therapy and group sessions and get them job training and job placement. And that's how we should go about solving homelessness. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. How would you deal with NIMBYs who refuse to allow affordable housing in District 2?
Well, I think the question was about housing in NIMBYs. The reality is that I don't think it's, District 2 has the least amount of affordable housing. I think it's maybe District 10 or some other districts, like District 9. But what I've committed to is being open to finding locations and to try to break down those barriers as it relates to communicating and being very open and transparent about some of these projects that are making their way forward. As an example, there's a recent project, 147 units is being built by Charities Housing. They're bringing that forward to the Planning Commission over the next few weeks. I've publicly stayed out of the fray and let the process take its course. The city attorney has advised me that I actually shouldn't be expressing my opinion, given that it may be appealed to the full city council and that I would need to recuse myself. But I am fully committed to bring down any barriers of acceptance from residents and really building that acceptance of affordable housing and any type of housing in our district.
Sergio, do you support community land trusts to buy land and preserve it for affordable housing?
Certainly. Well, that one was on too. I certainly do. I think, you know, the Parks Department, for example, many years ago, did something that what they called land banking, right? Because we know that land increases in value, and so anything we can do to preserve and protect some of the existing land and sort of set it aside for future developments and such, I think it's a wonderful idea, and any chance we can get, I hope to do that.
Sorry, what was the question again?
Do you support community land trusts to buy land and preserve it for affordable housing?
I support definitely preserving land for housing. I think that when it comes to affordable housing, we need to identify exactly how it's going to be affordable. Is it going to be subsidized housing? Is it going to be another tax that's put on our middle class that will make them effectively priced out of this area? Or is it going to be something that is actually done correctly by reducing fees and costs and making it so that we can actually have housing that is affordable because it is cheaper to build and more affordable for us all? So that's the difference.
All right. So on to the next topic, division on city council. The division in our current national political landscape appears to be trickling down to local politics. We've seen an increasing number of six-of-five split votes this year without much room for compromise. How would you bridge the so-called business versus labor divide on the council and work with colleagues with whom you strongly disagree with? Jonathan?
Yeah. So it is sad. It is sad that we have that business-labor divide. I think it goes even deeper than that in some issues. And the way to break it, I think, is to realize that we're all human, you know? We all live here in San Jose, we all care deeply about our city, and it's about breaking down those barriers, those preconceived notions that a lot of people have, and realizing that it's not just a council member, it's a person, it's a mother, it's a father, it's a, it's a somebody that we care about deeply. And the way to do that, you need to go ahead and off the dais, away from city council, get together with your colleagues and figure out who they are, understand them, joke around a little bit, and understand the person. Because that's what's beautiful about our city is we have this beautiful diversity, and we need to unify and work together, and we're going to make a very strong and successful San Jose.
So I think one of the things to keep in mind is that the folks on the city council all have different opinions. I think we oftentimes have the same ideas as to where we want to get to and what the aspiration is. But the reality is, we view the world through different lens. We have some folks on the city council who are staunch, we're staunch Republicans and refuted the party and sort of stepped aside from the party, but they still remain very, those values still remain very much intact. And so some of these things can't be bridged. And I can assure my competitor that some of those discussions, the collegiality, that exists. I think personally, it's a failure of the leadership at the top from the mayor. And so I think if we had a mayor that opened up his arms a little bit more and was willing to compromise on some of these issues, that we'd break down some of those walls that I believe are artificial, and we can really truly find solutions to some of the things that we all care about.
All right. So a big topic, Coyote Valley. One of the biggest issues your district faced in the past year was to fight to preserve Coyote Valley, as opposed to using the land for economic development and to create jobs. Do you agree with this decision to preserve it? Why or why not? Sergio?
I certainly agree with the position to preserve it. This is a conversation that had been going on for 30-plus years, long before I became elected. When I initially ran for office, I stated that this was one of my number-one priorities, and I'm so proud of the fact that we finally got it done. Now, we're not going to be losing those jobs, we're simply reallocating those jobs to other places. Places, I believe, that are going to be similar to downtown. For example, the Monterey Corridor, we're in the process of reimagining that. Additionally, if you drive about a mile or so from Coyote Valley, you'll clearly see that the Edenvale Technology Park has tons of vacancies. And North San Jose as well has really been a hotbed for a lot of the new development and new attraction for corporations to come. So I think there's plenty of places around the city where we can reallocate some of those jobs, and I believe preserving it into perpetuity, which is what we did, is the best thing for the residents of District 2 and the city as a whole.
Yes, I agree with it. I think that preserving our natural open space is very important. I think that having open space for years to come for the next generation of San Joseans like my daughter, who's three years old, I think it's important for her to be able to go out there and see the natural environment. I think that's important for a lot of us. We're stuck in a city, and a lot of times, it'd be nice to go out to Coyote Valley and get away from things, decompress, de-stress, and just enjoy nature and the beauty of it. I think it's important to preserve that and also to preserve our other corridors like Coyote Creek, the Guadalupe River, for example, our parks, they need major help. And I want to make sure that they have the money and the funding to preserve those and restore the environments there for all of us.
All right. San Jose is looking for new ways to generate money for affordable housing. And the council has approved a March 2020 ballot measure to tax voters with a real property transfer tax for affordable housing. Jonathan, will you be voting yes or no on this measure, and why?
I will not be voting for this measure. I'm saying no to all new taxes right now. I'm saying that because we're overtaxed. Our middle class is being decimated, they're being wiped out, our neighbors are leaving. You know, my neighbors are leaving, family is leaving, because they cannot support, they cannot live here. That is very difficult when my opponent has voted for just about every tax possible, except for this last one, I think maybe he was feeling a little political pressure from us. But we can't afford it anymore. Instead, we need to make, do with the resources that we have, with the taxes that we're already bringing in. We need to make sure that we have policies that make it better and more affordable to live here on our own salaries, as opposed to being subsidized and taxing everybody out of our, out of our city.
Well, I thought it was important to vote no on that measure. I really do believe that tax fatigue exists. I'm a homeowner, I've been paying taxes for many, many years, and often, some of these regressive taxes often fall on the backs of many of the folks that just are barely making it in the valley. And so one point of distinction, though, is that I am not against every tax. I think that our corporate partners need to really stand up, and these corporations that are worth billions upon billions of dollars really need to step up and be part of the solution. And so that's what I was interested in taxing. And so I will be voting no for it. I really do think that my residents and many residents across the city are tax fatigued, and so I don't think it's going to be a good thing, and I'm certainly not supportive of it.
Right. Okay. On to electricity. Following years of disastrous fires and planned power outages, Mayor Sam Liccardo has called for a customer-owned utility in San Jose. Sergio, do you support that proposal? Why or why not?
So I think it's a proposal worth exploring. There's a lot of questions that I have. For example, if we go down that path, again, something worth exploring. But what I'm curious about is what liability is the city taking on as we go down that path? What I also know, that a lot of the current PG&E workers are proud members of IBW and get paid good wages, have a good retirement. And I want to make certain that if we brought that in-house to a certain extent, if, making sure that those workers wouldn't be at the whim of political pressure, of different folks with different ideologies, I want to make sure their constituents remain to be safe, and that would be the number-one priority that I would look at when evaluating whether this is the way to go. But I think it's worth looking at.
Yeah, I understand exactly what Mayor Liccardo is trying to do here, and I agree with him in principle there. I also do not believe that this is the right time to go ahead and follow that plan for San Jose. I think that if we do that, we're going to be inheriting an infrastructure that needs massive improvement immediately. We're going to be liable for any damages or any, you know, natural disasters, or unnatural disasters, I should say, from that grid and from those utilities. And we need to make sure that we're able to handle that. You know, the last thing we want is death or human life, you know, on our hands. So we want to make sure that we have the ability and the support network and the infrastructure in place that we can handle that and so that we can fix that. The other thing I'm worried about is, we have an unfunded pension liability in the city of San Jose that's around $3 billion. That's a huge amount of money, and if all of a sudden we're hiring or acquiring this PG&E and we have a bunch of new employees in the city, that's going to drastically increase our unfunded pension liability with new city employees, and we need to take a look at that. I suggest letting other cities do it first, and we learn from them.
All right. Jonathan, what do you think is the biggest difference between you and incumbent Sergio Jimenez?
I think that when it comes down to it, it would be taxes, it would be results, and it would be unity. Taxes, I've already said, I'm not going to vote for another tax. We're already taxed enough, and we want to make sure that our middle class stays here. When it comes to results, I'm a very results-oriented person. You know, I received a recognition for designing a device that actually keeps our soldiers alive and safe overseas. And that was something that was very important to me. That was something that they said I couldn't do the first round, but I did. On top of that, when it comes to unity, our district is very divided. Look at us on Nextdoor. We're fighting, people are going after each other. That's unacceptable, and I think that does come from the top. In this case, that would be the council member here. You just heard him earlier say that there's problems with Mayor Liccardo. He's also said that Mayor Liccardo is racially dividing the city. That's not unity, that's divisiveness.
If I can, I'd like to answer, but what I would say is, I never included the word racially dividing the city. So I think it's important to, if we're talking about unity or creating disunity or divisions, that type of language is exactly what leads to that. What I would tell you is that the biggest difference is, is that I've been in the district for close to 20 years. I've put in the work. I was on a commission. I've started neighborhood associations. And I think that's a very clear distinction between me and my competitor. About a year and a half ago, he was running for office in another district. He was unsuccessful, the voter said no. And now he's come into District 2, and I think, quite frankly, I find it a little insulting that he would come into District 2 not knowing anything about the district or the people or the challenges, and yet saying, "I want to represent you." And so that, for me, is one of the fundamental differences. Some of the divisions that he's pointed out, he's actually been part of that, showing up to a meet and greet that I was hosting, not randomly, but purposely showing up to create division. This gentleman's the one that's doing that, not me.
I'm going to rebut that.
Okay.
About a year and a half ago, a little over that, my, there was a shooting right next door to our house. I had to go pick up my infant daughter, carry her in my arms and take her down to the floor because we were afraid of the bullets that were flying next to our house and through our house. That's something that's a major problem. We moved from that area. You know, we had a quadruple homicide, suicide, a few blocks down. We had a Vietnamese cafe that was shot up in that area. We had a man defecate on the street, go after my wife and call her every four-letter nasty name you can think of. Thank you.
Okay. So to reflect a little bit on next year's elections, should we move city mayoral elections to presidential years to boost voter turnout and limit major campaign contributions as proposed by a ballot measure being pursued by labor leaders? If not, then what do you suggest? Sergio?
Oh. It's okay. So I've been a staunch supporter of moving the mayoral election. There are folks that are gathering signatures currently to bring this additional sort of context as it relates to lobbying and such. The most important component of that to me is the moving of the mayoral election. We had political scientists, professionals, come before the council and express to us that the easiest, quickest way to increase voter turnout, which I would like to think we all desire, would be to move the mayoral election. The majority on the council decided not to do that, and so that's why I'm totally in supportive of this ballot measure. I believe that when it comes before us, before all the voters, that folks are going to be in support of that. I think it's going to give us the ability to finally have more than two women mayors in the history of the city, in the 200-plus-year history of the city. We've had only two women as mayors, and only two people of color become mayor of the biggest city in this region. And so I think it's very important for inclusiveness and to make sure we bring more people into the fold.
I am not in favor or supportive of this. I think that the whole premise was to eliminate special interests from our elections. Well, the problem is that it eliminates half of the special interests from one side, and the other half are still there. So that makes it a very unfair playing field and gives the other side a huge advantage, that would be Sergio's side, which is why he is in favor of it. Moving the mayoral election, you know, you're going to take it away from the odd districts, which includes Districts 7 and 5, two of the highest minority districts in the city. They have a very low voter turnout as it is, and by keeping the election and those odd years, you're going to ensure that you have more voters representing those two districts. That's important for San Jose.
If I can rebut? So I think one of the things that we've realized when the professionals, the political scientists, actually came in front of the city council is, they rebutted just that, and they said that would not, in fact, happen. And so the challenge is that we keep repeating things, thinking they're going to be, we're going to make them into real facts. That is just not the case. And so that's why I strongly am supportive of this. I think there's also a qualitative difference between money coming from corporate interest that maybe is funding this gentleman's campaign, or money coming from John, Jan, and Jane, who actually contribute 20 bucks or $30 from each check. There's a qualitative difference, and that's why I'm supportive of this. And, you know, certainly folks that don't, are going to reap any benefits from this certainly don't want it to happen.
Okay. So we have a little bit of time left for a question from the audience. Patty Fishburne, she wants to ask you, how will you solve the homeless encampments on Monterey Road? Jonathan, would you like to start?
Yeah. So the first thing that we need to do is, we need to look at, we need to look at addressing the underlying issues and causes of homelessness. People along Monterey Road, you know, people who are living in tents, people who have obvious problems like mental illness, they need to be, they need serious help. We need to look at the county to implement Laura's Law for people who do have mental illness to make sure that they get help, even when they don't know that they need help, to make sure that they do get the help that they require. We need to go along, we need to make sure, we need to make sure that, gosh, I just drew a blank, that orange sign just got me. We need to make sure that we help people the right way. I was mentioning the programs by Rhode Island. Rhode Island definitely has a program that we need to initiate here in San Jose, Santa Clara County, in the state of California, by helping people breaking their addiction cycles. You know, currently, the Housing First methodology does not do that, and that's why we see people congregating along Monterey Corridor, because they're close to these areas where people are housing.
So the way we've tried to solve the situation along Monterey Road has really been with dignity and respect. Those folks are living in between train tracks and a highway, which was called Blood Alley many years ago. And so what we've been doing is coordinating with all the city departments, with San Jose Police Department, with Union Pacific, to try to figure out a way to relocate those folks somewhere else. The fundamental challenge is that we don't have enough beds, even if all those people wanted services. And so we need to increase the number of beds we have within San Jose and within Santa Clara County. I'm proud of the fact that this issue with Union Pacific has been going on for many years, and I was the first council member in South San Jose to actually take on the issue, to bring forward the idea of developing a memorandum of understanding in which we can get consistent cleanups from there, while also try to solve the issues as it relates to homelessness there. The other fundamental thing that I think is important for folks to understand is that a lot of those folks are actually on District 10 property. But guess what happens? I'm actually the one that answers the phone. We're taking the calls, we're trying to do the best we can, because unfortunately, many council members aren't doing their part. And so I look forward to continuing to try to find the solution to that.
All right. So we have time for two more questions, different topics. First one on climate change. One of the only issues that gets as much attention as the housing crisis in the Bay Area is climate change. What is something you'd push forward to tackle climate change if you were elected? Jonathan?
Something I would push forward to attack climate change if I was elected?[1724.08] I think that we're doing a pretty good job with our smart buildings, having rooftop gardens, increasing our green space. I think that's something that's very important. Increasing our public parks, making sure that we actually protect our environment, that's a big thing. We have a lot of homeless encampments that are in our waterways, in our watershed, and those environments are being destroyed. And I think that one of the things we need to do here in San Jose at a local level is to protect those watersheds and to make sure that the natural environments can heal themselves and repair themselves. That's extremely important to me. I hear stories of people going into Coyote Creek and fishing for crawdads 20 years ago. And that would never happen today. So we need to make sure that we repair those areas first, something within our control, and then we can work towards greater things later on.
I think some of the things that come to mind is some of the things we've already been doing here at the city, whether it be the Reach Code to make buildings more energy-efficient, whether it's starting and creating San Jose clean energy to procure cleaner energy to the residents. Obviously, the discussion about Coyote Valley is super important, and that was a massive sort of lift, but has many tangible benefits to the residents, whether it's making sure the water basin continues to provide clean drinking water, whether it's absorbing some of the carbon sequestration. The other thing that we need to do is we need to start moving people out of vehicles. Buildings and vehicles are the largest causes of CO2 emissions in the world. And so as we begin to develop and redevelop our highway system and our public transportation system, we need to take into account that that needs to be done in particular areas to get people out of cars. And I think that's going to be beneficial for many years to come.
All right. So, for our last question, expanding on so many of the topics that we've already covered, public safety. So many residents in District Two have expressed some concern with property crime, blight, a lack of police response. Given the police department's limited resources and staff, how would you tackle the rise in crimes throughout the district?
So one of the first things I think you should know about me is that I used to be a public defender investigator. I spent many years in the justice system, understanding the reason for some of this crime and how it takes place. I think first and foremost, we need to continue to build community bonds because folks are less likely to break into your house if they actually know you. So we've been doing everything possible to make sure to provide spaces where neighbors can come and know each other. The other thing is, I don't buy into this whole idea that the city's burning down, crime's out of control, crime's rampant. Certainly, we're a big city, we have a lot of big city issues, but there's folks running for office, including current sitting politicians, that continuously peddle fear. And I don't think that's healthy. I think what's happened over the course of these years, when Nextdoor sort of came up and has been live for many years, is you click on that button, you go on nextdoor.com, and it seems like the world's burning down. And I think certainly some politicians or aspiring politicians like to take advantage of that. But the reality is that we still live in a very safe city. The academy's going up, we're working on opening the substation, which I hope is going to open in the next year. And those are some of the things we're going to do to combat crime.
So here's the deal, crime is up. You know, Prop 47 was passed in 2014, it reclassified over 900 felonies, released a few hundred thousand felons back into the streets of California, about 6,000 of which went into Santa Clara County. Crime is up, and our officers are unable to actually enforce the law because of Prop 47, 57, and AV 109. You see it because it takes nine and a half minutes for our officers to respond to priority one call. That's unacceptable. Nine and a half minutes when somebody's trying to break into your house and potentially kill you is unacceptable. I actually had lunch this morning with a bunch of our retired officers, and they said the number one way to reduce crime in San Jose is to increase the amount of police officers that we have. That's why on my website, votefleming.com, I've put, "We need to increase our police force to at least 1,400 officers." And we need to have an aspiring goal towards 2,000 here in the next decade, or else we're going to have major problems that are going to continue.
Rebut.
Yeah.
So, increasing police officers is not a novel idea. Certainly, every opportunity we've had at the city council, including myself, has voted to increase officers. I meet with the police chief every month, and we talk about, as he likes to say, SJPD rising. And so we're working towards that, and it's getting better and better with time. But the other thing I'd like to point out, because I've heard this consistently, even by some of my colleagues, consistently peddle this idea that Prop 47, these state actions, have created more crime, drawing a very straight-line correlation from that action to what's happening. That is patently false. There is no data that shows a clear correlation, and to say so is just flatly incorrect.
I'm going to rebut that rebut. There is data that says that Prop 47 is directly responsible for the crime that we're seeing on the streets. That's why when you go to the telly ball fields and you see kids playing in Spartan Little League, they're being harassed by people exposing their genitals to them. You know, there are feces on the field, there are syringes that are on the fields. I actually got into politics because I met a child who hit his leg on a syringe going down a slide at the La Rajon Tot Lot. I said, "That's not happening." We went to our council, we went to the city, they didn't fix it. So we had to start our Neighborhood Association Leadership Group. I had to go teach at San Jose State University and then bring those students out there to go and clean up the fields because our city, our acting politicians, were not. They were not doing their job. We need change, San Jose.
Okay. Well, I think that's a good end to our segment. Thank you both so much for coming and being here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Now, let's welcome to the stage the candidates for San Jose City Council, District Four. This seat, which covers Alviso, Berriessa, and North San Jose, is currently held by Council Member Long Diaz, who is being challenged by the candidates on this stage. We invited Council Member Diaz to participate, but he informed us today that he would not be here due to a VTA meeting. All right. Would you like to begin by introducing yourself?
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. Good evening, everybody. My name is Hui Tran, and I'm running to represent North San Jose, District Four, on our city council. Over the next decade, our city is going to be transformed. And this is going to be particularly true for North San Jose, as we await the arrival of BART and new commercial and residential developments. We need to prepare for and embrace these changes. And our responsibility, as we navigate this growth, is to ensure that the benefits of this reach every resident in San Jose. That is where our council and our incumbent have failed. Over the past two years, homelessness has boomed 42%. Right now, a family of four earning up to $94,000 is considered low income. And right now, 25% of the renters in Berriessa spend more than half of their income on rent. We have a responsibility to ensure that the benefits of this growth reach everyone. I'm running for city council and challenging our incumbent because that is not what's been happening, and the failures of these policies are making everyone suffer. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Hi, my name is David Cohen. I'm running for District Four. I want to thank San Jose Spotlight for hosting this event. I'm a huge supporter of San Jose Spotlight. You're doing a great service for our community by bringing another news source into our city. I love San Jose, and when I love something, I want to make, I work hard to make it better. That's why I've served as a library commissioner, as a volunteer, and as a school board member in District Four for over 20 years. As a parent, tech engineer working in District Four, and as a school board member, I've seen a lot of the problems that we're trying to deal with in our city. Four years ago, people asked me to run for the seat in the city council, and my family wasn't ready for that, so I didn't do it, and I continued to serve on the school board. I'm proud of that service, but I've been watching our current council and our current council member, and I think we can do better. So this year, when I was again asked to run, I decided to step up and take on the challenge. As a parent who worries about the future of leaving our kids in the school, in our district, as a tech engineer who sees the opportunities and challenges that high tech has brought to our community, and as a school board member who sees the, yes, I see, sorry, as a school board member who sees the high cost of living and how it affects our parents and families and teachers, I know that we can do better in San Jose.
My name is Jamal Khan, and I grew up here in District Four. I attended public schools in District Four, K through 12. I went to Laneview, I went to Morrell, I went to Independence, where I graduated as a valedictorian. I then attended the University of California, Berkeley, and Harvard Law School. I have worked for Catherine Cortez Masto, who was the first Latina to be elected to the U.S. Senate in American history. I've also worked for Nancy Pelosi, Kamala Harris, Sam Liccardo, and the White House during the Obama administration. As a millennial, I know how difficult it will be for me to live and work in the same district that I grew up and went to school in. And I know that I'm not the only one of my generation who is facing some very difficult decisions in the years ahead. And that's what makes me excited at the prospect of being able to serve the community that raised me as a public servant. Thank you.
All right. So, on to our first topic, the impact of big tech. Many Silicon Valley residents blame big tech for exacerbating problems, excuse me, such as traffic and high cost of housing, while paying contract service workers stagnant wages. How can the city step in, sorry, battling a cold. How can the city step in to ensure tech giants are doing their part to address impacts from growth and helping service workers survive here? Hui?
You know, we just saw an article this week that Google has now purchased four additional properties along Tasman Drive. This growth in the tech sector, if coming here, we should welcome it because these companies produce a massive amount of economic benefit for our region and for our cities. However, while tech has not caused some of the issues that we face today, they are certainly going to exacerbate them. These companies should be welcomed into our district and into our neighborhoods, so long as they are willing to be good neighbors. One of the issues that I fought for on the Housing Commission, and along with my colleagues who formed a coalition to support this proposal, was to enact the commercial linkage fee. That is a one-time assessment on new commercial developments that would ensure that we get additional revenues to address the problems that we have to face, but money that would actually go towards building affordable housing. Now, these companies have devoted to certain resources to try to help us, but we cannot rely on charity to solve our problems. We need to rely on ourselves and policy.
So as an engineer in high tech, I see firsthand the benefits that high tech has brought to our community, but I also see the challenges. It's hard for us to recruit engineers to work in this valley because of the high cost of living. And we're forcing people to commute from really long distances to work in all kinds of jobs here in this community, and it's not good for the future of our valley. What we've failed to do as a city is build the affordable housing to go along with the economic development that we've had. It's been an incredible failure of this current city council and our current council member. We need to be focused on building more mixed-use development that allows for tech jobs, but also allows for housing right nearby, for better transit villages around transit stations, and ways for people to be able to afford to live near where they work. So my focus will be on making sure that we build more affordable housing in North San Jose, where we have a lot of the tech jobs, so that people are living near where they work. And we can't continue to punt the affordable housing component of the housing development that's happening in San Jose.
When you look at recent developments, you have the $2.5 billion from Apple, you have a billion apiece from Google and Facebook. All of that money, it's a nice chunk of change, and a responsible council member will work closely to see how some of that money can be used to help with building more affordable housing units and helping people stay in their homes, helping renters stay in their homes, and to help the community. I think when you look at the tech company's perspective, recently Mark Zuckerberg said at a meeting that any further major expansion of Facebook would have to take place outside of the Bay Area because having it inside the Bay Area was just not, would just not be sustainable. So the tech companies themselves are recognizing that this is becoming a major issue. And a big role for the city would be to ensure that tech companies, as they do their expansion, they create jobs, they also play a role in making more affordable housing for workers who would fill those jobs.
And as we've seen, one of the byproducts of this economic boom is rising cost of living and people being displaced, and also homelessness. Homelessness in the city has increased by 42% in the last two years, despite voters approving a $950 million bond measure for affordable housing. Why aren't we making a dent in the problem, and what new solutions do we need to try? David, would you like to start off?
Okay. So, we have not done enough to tap into resources that we have for tackling our homeless problem. The state and federal government are offering all kinds of grants and resources, and our city has not been taking advantage of that. So that's number one, we need to do that. Number two, we need to be compassionate towards the people who are homeless and find better solutions for them in the short term and the long term. Our city had made a commitment many years ago to build transient housing, and they said, "We're going to build one in each council district." Well, it's been four or five years since that commitment was made, and we're just now getting around to opening the first two of those villages. We're not building enough temporary housing for people to help them get back on their feet. We need to invest more as a city in the programs that are keeping people from becoming homeless in the first place. There are great programs out there run by organizations like Destination Home, and we know that if we give a little bit of money to people to prevent them from becoming homeless, it works, 95% effective. So the city needs to invest more in programs like that.
Jamal, how do you respond to that?
Well, I think when you look at recent changes that have been enacted by the city council, changes to the Ellis Act or the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, you know, these changes were made to reduce barriers or bottlenecks for the construction of more housing. So it looks like there will be more overall housing that's available. But one issue is that you're going to have, is that affordable housing is more necessary to the number. And I think it's very important that we look at what's causing, you know, why is it so hard to have more affordable housing? And one issue is that one unit of affordable housing can cost over $100,000 more than a unit of market-rate housing. And that has to do with a variety of factors. And so one of the jobs of a responsible council member will be to look at how to ease that friction, reduce those bottlenecks, and make it so that it's easier to build affordable housing and make it appealing to developers.
You know, as the only person on this stage right now who's actually worked on housing policy, you know, for me, this is something that's personal. I've actually experienced this before, actually having lived without my car before. And the person who gave me the opportunity to turn things around was Assemblyman Ash Kalra, the first person to endorse my candidacy. Having lived that experience, I recognize that one of the biggest issues we have to do at a fundamental level is change how we talk about this. The reason why we see homeless folks increase, and in places where you can't see them, is because they're stigmatized and judged. Now, to actually solve the problem, though, is not just about how much resources we have, it's about how we use them. The Measure A, which provided $950 million to provide affordable housing, was phenomenal. It's great. But we actually have nonprofit organizations that can build affordable housing. They have the expertise, and they have the know-how to do it, but they have to compete with private developers over the cost of land. We also actually have a lot of people right now who want, we actually have a lot of private developers who want to find it as every way possible to escape their responsibilities in building affordable housing. And that is an obligation we cannot deny, we cannot allow. We have to ensure that they build affordable housing into their designs.
On the topic of affordable housing, the council has approved a March 2020 ballot measure to tax voters with a real property transfer tax to support funds for affordable housing. Will you be voting yes or no on this measure and why? Jamal, do you want to respond?
Sure. So, one thing about what's going to show up on the ballot is that this is not a bond measure, which would, you know, because there were not, that would lead to like being used for a specific purpose. Instead, the funds from this would go into the general fund. And so my support for this ballot measure would be conditional on assurances that the proceeds from this property transfer tax would actually go towards affordable housing and alleviating homelessness and other similar causes, and not just for the general fund where it's allocated for other causes that are not relevant to what it was put on the ballot measure for. So that's a very important thing. It's conditional on, will it be used for the right purposes at the right time?
Hui, how do you respond to that?
I would support the property tax transfer, property transfer tax, excuse me. Right now, the average cost of a home in the Berriessa area, at least in the area where I'm at by Morrell Middle School, is between $1.1 and $1.2 million. At that price rate, a couple or a person would have to earn $250,000 a year to be able to afford to buy a home. Setting the cap at $2 million, or the floor at $2 million before the tax kicks in, actually carves out a lot of the families, a lot of the people who live in San Jose and are not able to buy these homes in the first place. We need the revenue so that we can actually devote more resources towards building affordable housing in San Jose and funding the kind of homeless prevention programs that we know are successful. Now, I actually recognize the criticisms of it as well, because our council just voted to give away $67 million in fee waivers to downtown high-rise developers. And so they're getting away with not meeting their obligations to help us solve this problem, but we are shifting this to our homeowners. I recognize that. But this is not the majority of the people in our city. This is something we can take on and afford.
I'm supportive of the measure, and there's been, I think, unfair criticism of the measure, as was mentioned just now. The fact that there's a $2 million minimum where this kicks in means that a lot of our homeowners are not going to be affected by this. And in reality, the homeowners who are selling $2 million homes are, have enough profit in their home to be able to pay the small increase in the property transfer tax, and it's an important source of revenue. When the bond measure failed a couple years ago, that was intended to be putting money into building more affordable housing, the city needed to start finding alternative ways to get revenue. And the $75 million a year that will come from this tax will go a long way to helping us address the affordable housing crisis.
All right. On to the topic of economic development. San Jose for years has taken a hard stance against converting industrial or jobs land for housing because of our jobs imbalance, despite our crippling housing shortage. Do you support converting jobs land for housing in certain circumstances? Which ones? Hui? Hui?
I support converting our economic development lands into mixed use. The housing-to-jobs imbalance was not created in the past two years. The reason that we have this imbalance is that it was decades of decision-making, of sprawl, of expanding suburban boundaries, where instead of focusing on economic development, we just kept building single-family homes. Now, we have to deal with the circumstances that we are in, which means that if we choke off the resources and the available land we have available to address the issues that we face right now, the housing crisis that nobody can deny, we are cutting off our ability to solve the problem and serve the residents. So a lot of land is available right now along North First Street, which has been set aside specifically just for economic development. We need to keep an open mind for how we can use the land in a way that is most effective, most efficient, and can address the needs that we face today. One of the ways we can do that is finding ways we can convert the use of just dead parking lots and empty buildings that don't provide any benefit to us in the nights, weekends, or for the communities that live there.
So this is an area in which I have a huge disagreement with our incumbent. Our incumbent has basically said that there's a rulebook that's called the General Plan for the City, where we have property that's zoned for commercial and property that's zoned for residential. And that rulebook means that we can't consider alternatives when different proposals are coming forward. And it's really important, given the crisis we have in housing in this city, that we consider alternatives, that we use our property in the best way possible to solve the biggest crisis we have in our community. That biggest crisis right now is the inability of people to afford to live here. We have a lot of property in North San Jose that is kind of out of date, a lot of, as big parking lots, as Hui was saying, but also a lot of buildings that are one-story buildings that are just not the best use of our property. And we can convert a lot of that property to mixed-use development. And the other thing I'm really concerned about is the lack of services that are being built along with the housing that's being built in North San Jose. We need to do a better job of sustaining our development, building libraries, community centers, and other services for our families that will move into that housing.
So I think that, you know, we need more than, you know, one approach to deal with the affordable housing crisis. So one of them obviously does have to do with rezoning, you know, from some industrial to residential or allowing for some mixed use. I think that's a very good idea. With that being said, the overwhelming majority of residential-zoned land in San Jose is single home, and we have to think creatively about, you know, what to do about that. Obviously, for new housing developments, we want sort of some multifamily units that are much more dense and local, closer to public transit. But we could also look at things like accessory dwelling units and making it easier for people to, for homeowners to explore those options, which would increase the supply of affordable housing, and you could do it faster than, you know, what rezoning would entail.
So Councilmember Diop voted in favor of continuing to give tax breaks to high-rise developers to spur more development. Do you support continuing those subsidies? Why or why not? David?
I do not support continuing those subsidies. We have, as a city, failed miserably in building affordable housing and putting in enough services along with the housing that we're building. And it's really important that we make sure that our developers are responsible. There are a lot of other ways that we should be addressing the issue with affordability of building housing in this community. We need to figure out how to speed up the process of getting from plan to shovel in the ground. That will help cut the red tape and cut the fees, that cut the costs. And the developers I talked to say that if we can do that, we can, they can afford to continue to pay the fees that will help us build the housing that we need. So the city really needs to hunker down and figure out why it is that it takes four years from plan to building. To be able to do that in a year, cutting that down by 75% will help us get affordable housing built and get even market-rate housing built. And so there's a lot of things we should be doing before we give these breaks to developers in San Jose.
Jamal, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I think, you know, developers will say that there is a kind of a benchmark figure, 5.25% profit expected, that they want to see before they will pursue a project. And if it's less than, if it's less than that, if it's 4%, then, you know, they say they may not want to pursue it, and they may need some subsidies. So my concern is that, given the, all the property sort of purchases and plans that are going on, I think that we need to look at, do they actually need those subsidies? Are the subsidies the deciding factor in whether or not they will actually move forward with those projects? Because I feel like sometimes the city may cave too quickly when it comes to negotiating with developers or looking at whether subsidies are actually required or not. I think that the city should take a stronger bargaining position and only approve these kinds of subsidies if they're absolutely necessary for further construction, rather than just kind of a giveaway to these developers.
Excuse my coughing. Excuse me. You know, we were working on all these housing policies while I was on the Housing Commission. I absolutely oppose the continuation of these fee waivers. What we just lost is $67 million in resources that would actually go towards affordable housing and would go towards our parks. The reason why the developers asked for it is because it made it very clear, they want additional profit. The trickle-down approach that our city council has taken to solving this problem has not addressed the issues that we need, because the, over the past couple of years, under the rules that we had, we, all of the market, all of the developers have only built market-rate housing. There has not been enough of a focus on affordable housing, and yet now, we are giving them tax breaks to continue down the same path that has led us astray over the past couple of years. We need to build, where we at right now, on our way to $10,000 affordable units is 245, while we have met every benchmark for market-rate production, and this is absolutely the wrong approach.
All right. Moving on to the general plan. A committee of San Jose residents and leaders last month started meeting to write a major update to San Jose's 2040 general plan, a process that happens every four years. What are some of the major changes to policy or land use that you'd like to see in that update? Jamal?
So I think we, obviously, affordable housing is one of the biggest issues that we're facing here in San Jose. And so a big thing is, again, as I mentioned before, something like the overwhelming majority of the land, of land that is zoned for residential use in San Jose is single home. And so what we need is an approach that has sort of multifamily housing, and as well as certain additional approaches like accessory dwelling units and, and other kinds of, you know, and making it so that it's like closer to public transit. So like, it's a holistic approach that will kind of require a lot of careful thinking and a lot of careful judgment, and a lot of input from stakeholders from a variety of backgrounds to take the right approach.
David?
So as somebody who would represent District Four on the council, it's important to me to keep in mind how we're developing North San Jose. North San Jose is being developed without the services that residents need in that area. As a library commissioner, 15 years ago, I had a discussion with the city librarian, and we said, you know, as all this housing gets built in this general plan, they're going to need a library in North San Jose, they're going to need community centers in North San Jose, they're going to need more shopping in North San Jose. It's been 15 years, and there's been no discussion of any of these services that people need. We talk about building transit-oriented housing, and that, those transit villages are not, are not real transit villages, as long as people have to come home on light rail and then get in their car to go find activities for their families and services and shopping. So we're going to need to do a better job in our general plan of making sure that we're building communities that are livable and sustainable. That's number one. Number two is much more mixed use. My opinion is that we should be building properties that have commercial, services, and residential all together without large parking lots surrounding these buildings, and we can get much more efficient building in North San Jose.
Let's break it down by areas. One of the things that we should absolutely maintain and continue to support is the development of urban villages. To the extent that we can expand and support the development of those areas around the Barriessa Bart Station, around Light Rail, we need to continue to do that, because mixed use allows us to get economic gain as well as meet our housing goals when we continue to support these villages. Along North First Street, we need to start opening up that more as well for housing. But right now, it is being zoned just for economic area development. And what we have up and down First Street is empty buildings and parking lots. On nights and weekends when people aren't working, or even during the day, for a lot of these empty buildings, the area is devoid of life. It is devoid of community. And that's what, one of the things that I hear the most out in the River Oaks area, where people move into these very expensive apartments and homes, and they want to stay, but they can't, because every two or three years, the residents move out. Excuse, not that they can't, they can't get to know the neighbors, because every two or three years, residents move out. We need to be able to expand our view and look at how we can build a sense of community in some of these areas as well.
All right. And we have time for one more question from the audience. The city of San Jose is designated as an age-friendly city with the World Health Organization. With the growing demographic of older adults becoming 25% of our population in the last 14 years, what are your plans to continue to make San Jose an age-friendly city? Jamal?
Yeah, so I think if you look at San Jose, you know, this is a community that has, you know, like, if you look at age, multiple demographics. There are people who grew up here, people who are working here, people who have lived here almost their whole lives. And I think that when you, you look at people who are kind of more senior in age, obviously you, there are certain considerations that you have to take into account for making it easier for them to get from one place to another. There are some who may no longer really be able to drive anymore, so finding other kind of considerations, working with community groups, nonprofit groups, whether it's faith faith groups or, or other groups, to help them with that. You know, when it comes to accessibility accommodations, you know, all of these measures need to be taken so that this is a city that's easy for people with a wide variety of, you know, sort of needs to be able to live in comfortably.
Hui?
Sure. You know, we have an incredibly diverse community in District Four. That represents not just diverse, you know, people in terms of ethnic backgrounds, but also in terms of age. I've had the opportunity to get to know a lot of our senior community at the community centers where there's programming that's offered, even at, excuse me, even at the Quail Hill Apartments, where I've had a chance to get to know the residents there. The way we can continue to build on our reputation as being a very age-friendly community is to ensure that we provide access to seniors for healthcare, for meals, and for ability to build bonds and relationships with each other. We can also do increased programming, because right now, we have, being a very diverse community means that a lot of our residents speak multiple languages. So we should be able to find ways to build programming that is culturally competent and accessible for people who are in the Filipino community, the Vietnamese community, the Hispanic community, every community that is represented in District Four. Building that age-friendly community is part of how we build life, and that's part of what our goal should be as we look at how our future plans.
David?
So I agree, we need to invest in programs for, for older residents in our community. One of the things that really concerns me, though, about the long-term viability of this, of the situation we have in this community is that most of our younger residents are leaving while many of the older residents are staying. And unless we find a way to get a better balance in our community between residents who, between the residents who stay in the community and people who are raising families, we're not going to have enough of a, resources for the people who are retired, who are still in our community. When I walk the precincts in District Four, what I see are many streets in which every resident is above 70 years old. That's because nobody can afford to move into our community, and many of the older residents can't afford to move out and find housing elsewhere. We need to address some of the things we've been talking about leading up to this question in order to make it a more friendly community for everybody to be able to live. As a school board member, what I'm most concerned about is the flight of people out of our community. Our school districts are shrinking because people can't afford to stay here.
All right. And in one sentence or less, what is the biggest difference between you and the incumbent councilmember Diop? Hui?
I think the biggest difference is that I believe in the value of, idea of public service. When we are, when we take on this responsibility, we are not doing our job by putting on costumes and being cartoonish. We do it by communicating with our residents and talking to them about what their needs are.
So for me, it's a connection to the community. It's about having raised a family in the community, it's about having served the community in various capacities over the years, it's about having worked in after-school programs like the Boys and Girls Club at the local school, seeing what our families and children need. It's about connection with the residents and the neighborhoods, and working to build neighborhood cohesiveness and neighborhood associations. We used to have that in District Four, we do not have that now.
As a council member, I will focus like a laser on doing what is in the best interests of the people who live in District Four. Whatever can preserve and enhance the quality of life of the people who actually live in the district, that will be my number-one priority in everything that I do.
All right. Okay. Okay. I guess we still have some time. All right. Never mind. Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Guys, bear with me. Okay. So, topic of electricity again. Following years of disastrous fires and planned power outages, the mayor, Sam Licardo, has called for a customer-owned utility. He spearheaded the effort with several other mayors in the state. Do you support that proposal? Why or why not? David?
When the red lights weren't on in the camera, I thought we were having an electricity problem. The basic principle for me is that something that's of such a public importance and a public need, like the public utility, should not be run by an organization whose primary interest is profit. So to me, the most important thing here is to find alternative ways to make the public good run by, owned and run, operated by the public agencies. Now, whether or not San Jose has the capacity to take it over itself, or whether we need a statewide process or regional process to do it, is up in the air. And I think we need to, I think, I'm glad that the mayor has brought up this topic so we can investigate and study the best way to do this, but I think it's going to require a regional approach, one in which many Bay Area cities get together, work on this together, and find a solution to make, to taking back the public good from the private for-profit organizations.
Sure. You know, I have a cousin who serves in the Richmond Fire Department, and for the past two years, he has driven north and put his life on the line to address these fires. When the idea came up that we should take back control of this public utility, I'm on board. Now, we need to fill in the details, we need to figure it out, but if we continue to allow the same thing to occur over and over again, and it not just puts the lives of our firefighters at risk, but can destroy entire communities, it is time for us to take a step back and take a real good, deep, long look at what we're doing and whether it is the right thing to do. Now, those details need to be figured out, I think we can address them, and, you know, when we get a more full proposal, I am all in favor of taking a look at it and seeing if it makes the best decision for our city and our constituents.
One of my college majors was economics, and what you learn there is that a market failure can occur when you have a utility, because these are natural monopolies. And so you need strong government oversight to make sure that they're not ripping off customers or providing substandard services. And I think what we've seen so far, I mean, PG&E is a convicted felon. We are paying our electricity bills to a convicted felon because of the 2010 San Bruno fire and, and other sort of lapses in, in judgment and performance over the years, where PG&E could have taken steps to mitigate the risks of something going wrong, and instead it used that money to pay bonuses to its executive. I mean, this is, and so I think if you have a utility that's customer-owned rather than investor-owned, that will properly align the incentives so that PG&E values customer, you know, it values safety and customer service.
So we've all noticed the division on the city council. How would you bridge the so-called business versus labor divide on the council and work with colleagues with whom you strongly disagree with? Hui?
Sure. There are going to always going to be issues where we passionately disagree. That is the benefit of a democracy. Competing ideas get brought before the voters, get brought before our council, and everyone has to make the decision that they believe is right. We can build bridges by recognizing where we disagree, but working together and finding those commonalities where we can address the issues where we know we can work together. Now, I've already worked on building coalitions and building support on, regardless of your party, regardless of your personal beliefs. That's why I have been endorsed by almost every single city-elected official from our neighboring jurisdictions. And I've also been able to get endorsements from local leaders in our communities, because I will get close to the ground and get to know what it is that is important to our constituents and to address those needs. The way to build bridges and build, build those connections and relationships, regardless of our disagreements, is to remember that this is what democracy is about. We have to accept that, different beliefs, work together where we can, but when we disagree, we disagree.
So I once spoke to an elected official in San Jose when I, after he had been elected, and I said, "Will you come and work with our organization?" And his answer was, "Well, you didn't support me in the election, therefore I'll work with the groups that supported me." That's exactly the wrong way to govern in the city and to be elected. As a school board member, my primary objective is to reach out to people who disagreed with me on topics. After a vote, a hard vote at a school board meeting, when there were people in the audience who weren't happy with the way things went, rather than walk the other way, like many of my colleagues did, I walked out, I walk out into the audience, and I keep an open door, and I say, "Let's have coffee next week, and let's talk about your perspective on these issues." That's how you build bridges and work together, and you don't have division, and that's how you change the, the way things are happening in this city with all the division that we have now. As a school board member, I also noted, noticed that we weren't working well with our neighbor- As a school board member, I also noted, noticed that we weren't working well with our neighboring jurisdictions, our other school districts. We have seven school districts in East San Jose that feed in to the Eastside High School District. And so in my first year on the board, I teamed up with an Eastside High School Board member, and we started an organization that became the Eastside Alliance, which is now a huge benefit to the Eastside students and their education, because we realize it's important to collaborate and work together and not be too insular.
The problem with this citywide fixation on having a 6-5 majority on the city council is that there's less attention being paid to the actual problems in the district, the fact that residents are concerned about 5G transmission towers near their homes, or the fact, or the charket overpass, things that actually affect the people who live here. I am the only candidate running who has not received an endorsement from either the Silicon Valley Organization on the right or the South Bay Labor Council on the left. And what that means is that I am not beholden to them. I will listen to what they have to say, but I am not beholden to them. The only group that I will be beholden to as a council member will be the electorate in District Four, the people who actually live there, because that's the way that democracy is supposed to work, not foreign interference from outside groups.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here, and we really liked your responses, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, let's welcome to the stage the candidates for San Jose City Council, District 10. This seat, which covers Almeden and Blossom Valleys, is being vacated by termed-out council member Johnny Camus. Would you please like to start by introducing yourself?
Hi, Matt Mahan.
Jenny Higgins-Bradenini.
Helen Wang.
Vin Doh.
Okay. Would you like to start with an opening statement?
Sure. Thank you to, thank you to Spotlight and Create TV for hosting this forum this evening. My name is Matt Mahan, and I'm running for city council because I want to ensure that San Jose continues to be a city of opportunity as it was for me. I grew up on the other side of the hill in a working-class family in a little town called Watsonville. And when I was 14 years old, I took public buses two hours each way to San Jose to get a better education and to have a better future. I think it's what's made San Jose a great city for many generations. Today, though, I think we're struggling to provide that same opportunity because we're failing to manage economic growth properly and to make the investments required to ensure that a growing economy benefits everyone. To me, that opportunity starts in our neighborhoods, which is why I'm fighting for neighborhoods that are safer, cleaner, have affordable housing, are connected to transit that works, to good roads and maintained infrastructure, and to the parks and open space and libraries that make our community strong. Thanks for having me.
Thank you to everybody that's here tonight to listen to our platforms and the values of the candidates up here. I'd like to give a special thank you to Create TV and Spotlight, and Spotlight for your independent reporting that provides reliable information to the citizens and residents of San Jose. I am Jenny Higgins-Bradenini, and I'm running for city council for one simple reason, because I care. I care about our families, I care about our future, and I care about the quality of life for all of those in San Jose. Local government matters, and it's a place where real change, positive change, happens for our family. This is a time of change for San Jose, and the decisions that this council makes now and in the future are going to shape San Jose and Silicon Valley. With the candidate, only candidate up here that has experience working at City Hall, that has worked in the private sector in San Jose, has raised my family in District 10, I know the issues, and I know what it takes to get the job done. So thank you for having us here tonight.
My name's Helen Wang. I'm running for city council, District 10. My family immigrated to San Jose in 1985, so I live in here since '85. And we actually were able to manage my business. I actually can sell the business, retire. I worked as a small business commissioner for City of San Jose for six years, and I'm also right now in the Small Business Task Force advisor for the City of San Jose. My passion, always helping local, small business to succeed, and they can retire like me. And also, my passion, always try to helping out the underrepresented group, the minority group, the women group, and to be succeed. And also, I would like to make the San Jose even better, and everybody can live here as prosperity and have great life. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Vin Doh. I am also running for city council over the, thank you for having me here as well. Over the next few months, you'll learn a lot more about me, as well as, I just want to talk, say to the people of District 10, feel free to always ask me any type of questions. I believe transparency is very important. Again, on with the show.
All right. So, let's begin by talking about Google and Durdon Station. The massive development interest in San Jose's downtown, in particular the Google proposal and J. Paul City View and Park Avenue redevelopments, will undoubtedly have ripple effects across the city. How can we ensure the impact from this wave of development is positive? Helen, would you like to start?
Well, I think the deposit is actually positive, so actually can create a lot of jobs. Especially, we have the renowned methodology studying between 2020 to 2035, we actually going to have, actually short of $150,000, $150,000, I should, I should say, affordable housing between the $30,000 level and $60,000 up to $100,000. So, Google right now actually spent quite a lot of money between Apple, so they actually designed funding, particularly for affordable housing. So we actually can use that one to do the affordable housing project specifically. On top of that, I guess we also have the ADU. And affordable housing, we need to make this a very specific project. One of the reasons is, the housing can only build four-story high. When you over-four-story high for affordable housing, one story higher, one storage down for the foundation, so the cost can be cost twice. So we need to tape the red tape and build affordable housing.
Jenny?
I am excited for, it's me? I don't see a light. Oh. I'm excited for Google actually to come in, and it's one of the reasons I actually wanted to run for city council, because if we ever have to get anything right, it's now. If we do this wrong, our city could be in despair for years to come. I think one of the things that we need to be very careful of is displacement. Google so far has come across as a good neighbor and has donated money without even having the commercial linkage fee in place. So as a, as a council member and a resident of San Jose, I think we'll all be appreciative of that. But I do worry about the displacement of the mom and pops and the people that have lived in this community for so long. As we come in and we don't, we need to be able to preserve, protect, and produce, and so as long as Google's doing that, I think it's going to be very positive for our city.
I'm actually in support of the Google Durdon Station. I believe that a lot of businesses, a lot of business and a lot of jobs will come into the area. We just have to worry about some traffic. I do believe that. Especially, we know what's going on around Shoreline with the Google campus over there. But I definitely am supportive of the Google campus coming into downtown San Jose.
You know, we've been working for decades to bring jobs to our urban core, to bring vibrancy and density, and I think it's a wonderful thing that we have Google and other employers looking at building in our downtown core. I also think that as we increase density and put jobs in that core, we're going to actually make transit more viable. We know that when people's jobs are located near transit, they will, they will figure out the last mile on the other end to get there. So I think it's a really good thing for our city. I think the biggest risk we face is adding jobs in our region without building housing. And the fact that we have such a lack of housing is a public policy failure. So the most important thing we can do as a city, as we welcome employers and bring jobs and grow the tax base and get more people using transit to get to work, is to ensure that we are building housing at the same time. And it's got to be all of the above. It can't just be subsidized affordable housing, it can't just be market rate. We need housing at all income levels, and we need it, we need it two decades ago. We've been systematically underbuilding for far too long.
All right. So nearly half the city council this past year voted against Mayor Sam Licardo's budget because they felt it did not allocate enough public dollars to vulnerable districts. And more affluent districts, such as District Six, receive the most resources. Do you think this is true, and how would you ensure funding is distributed more equitably across San Jose? Jenny?
Oh, yes. I agree with the council members when they talk about equity, and I know that was a long heated discussion that unfortunately didn't end up the way I think that the minority vote on the council. Equity has been an issue. We see such vast differences. We look at District Seven compared to District 10, and the equity there is, is so noticeable when we look at the amount, even at the amount of affordable housing and homeless that are in those districts compared to a district like District 10, it's, it's obvious that way. So I do support the study that the mayor suggested as a compromise that we would go forward with. And San Jose is a place for all residents and all people to have this ability to thrive and to enjoy all the things that San Jose is known for. So I think equity should be written into our budget next year for sure.
Helen, how do you feel about that?
I actually agree with Jenny for that point of view, because I think your, all the districts is different, especially if you go by property value, because they're paying for the property tax. So some property are much more expensive, and some properties lower price. So I think it should divided more equally to support the whole resident, not just particular district.
What about you, Matt? How would you ensure funding is more equitably distributed?
Well, first let me say, I, which camera are we on, guys? There's no light. Thank you. I would just say that we, I don't buy the premise that those who pay more in taxes should get more services or better services. So there's a group of city services, like roads and sewers and streetlights, that we all deserve and we all need, and they should be spread evenly, and everybody should have access to them. But equity also doesn't mean treating everyone exactly the same. I taught in Eastside San Jose, I saw the unique challenges that many of our immigrant, our young students from immigrant families face. And real equity means actually making strategic investments to help everyone realize their potential, and that means that we're not going to have the same programming levels and the same spending in every single neighborhood. And I think we should be okay with that, because we want to rise together as a city.
Well, if, if that is true, that other areas are getting more money than others, from what I see is, the area of San Jose is so wide, and values are different across spectrums. So I think for me, it would already make sense for that to happen, but I'd have to take a look into that a little bit more, to be completely honest. I have to, definitely have to take a look into that.
All right. Matt, do you support a commercial linkage fee on businesses for affordable housing?
I need to understand the details. I think that it is very risky of us as a city, a city that has long had a housing-to-jobs imbalance, to make it more expensive to run a business. We desperately need more jobs in our city to build out our tax base, and I want to make sure that we study it closely so that we don't have unintended consequences. I do think that businesses have an impact, namely, we need housing and transit infrastructure, and I want to make sure we make those investments. But we should ensure that adding fees doesn't actually push jobs out of the city and reduce the overall tax base that we have as a city. We're going to be stronger in the long run if we attract employers, have innovation and job growth happen here, build out the tax base, and invest those revenues in the infrastructure and the housing that we need. So I think it's actually an economic analysis that's needed to understand the trade-offs. But absolutely, we need revenue to invest in housing and infrastructure. We just need to do it in a way that allows us to continue to bring jobs.
Jenny?
Yes. I believe that we should have already had voted on and passed the commercial linkage fee. The study was supposed to have been done January 2020, and now they're saying it's June. I stand by Councilmember Perez with his concerns about pushing it forward and asking for more information to be put out now. Each month that goes by is millions of dollars that we potentially, opportunity to build more affordable housing. So I support it. I think we should initiate it now and take advantage of the situation where we can have the people that are, developers that are building these developments, come in on a one-time assessment fee to provide affordable housing.
Well, I need to have looking into more studying before, okay, I need to looking more to study before I would support the linkage fee, because I think they might have to limit it to particular amount of builder in the amount of gross for the building, because there's a lot of small business try to build their own building to run their own business. So you increase how much tax on them, they might not able to afford for that. Since I do have experience with my own commercial building, I know how much fee can cost a developer or small builder to build that one for, make up your own business or run your own building to support your own business. Usually, almost 30% of the fee going to the city. So the linkage fee actually going to increase more than 30% of the fee for small business to build their own building, to run their own business.
I don't, I don't agree with any type of taxes that would make it harder for businesses to do business here. So I'm just going to leave it at that.
Okay. Leading with you, Vin. What is the biggest difference between you and the termed-out council member, Johnny Camus?
Well, for myself, I, what I'm looking at right now is, I'm looking at the processes for all the, all the top topics that, and the concerns that the district is concerned about, things like homelessness, crime, safety, traffic. I want to look into the processes right now and make it more efficient. I honestly really, it doesn't matter who sits in this chair, if we make the process efficient, whatever improvements that we want to make, and whatever plans that we have from now into the future, I just want it to make it more actionable, because the people in, that I've spoken to in my district, they just have not seen results, and they would like to see results now.
Helen?
I don't see the light. Okay. Okay. I think my project or my thinking of how to run this city council in the management of the District 10, my idea probably pretty similar to current council member Camus. So, but I would like to work more on homeless, because my passion always in homeless. One of the reasons is I'm actually in the medical field, and I also, with my husband and some of my husband's friends, we actually volunteer at Homeless Shelter, treat homeless people for a couple of years. So I would like to solve and work more on homeless, get them out of the street, get them help, and make community more safe.
Well, the obvious difference is I'm a female and I'm six foot tall, but besides that, I would say, I'm, I'm running because I want to serve the people. I don't believe that city council should be working for corporate profits over the services and the needs of our people. I'm, I believe that as we look at the things that are coming forward, forward for us on the council, that we need to find what's best for the residents. With the waiving of the in-lufes on the vote that happened a few weeks ago, that way for the big developers to not have to pay the in-lufes for affordable housing, right there, he was supportive of that. I would have definitely have not voted for that, because I believe that the developers should be, should be paying into the affordable housing instead of working for corporate profits. We need, I need, and the council needs to be working for the people of San Jose.
I actually think the council member's been very representative of the community, been accessible, worked incredibly hard, been transparent. He's well-liked in the district because he shows up everywhere and he keeps the community informed. So I think he should be commended for that. Personally, I have a particular passion for the environment and for education. I'm a former public school teacher, lifelong environmentalist. Those are issues where I think it's more a matter of emphasis than necessarily a difference of agreement, but I just, I think we have to prioritize addressing our climate crisis. I want to see us do more to preserve open space, to invest in storage, and to get off of, off of fossil fuels. And on education, I think the city can be doing more before and after school and during the summers to support our young people and make sure they have opportunities for, for upward mobility.
As many of you know, Councilmember Camus is strongly opposed to any new taxes or fees. And San Jose is looking for new ways to generate money for affordable housing. And the council recently approved a March 2020 ballot measure to tax voters with a real property transfer tax for affordable housing. This will be on the ballot in March. Will you be voting yes or no on this measure and why? Matt?
Look, I'll be, I'll be voting no, and I'll be, I'll be really clear. I, I think affordable housing is, is a crisis for us. I should know, I grew up in a home in which we worried about making the mortgage payments every month. When I came back and was a public school teacher, we lived six people to a home just to, just to pay the rent. So I get it, I worked on Measure A, I worked on Measure V, which failed, but I knocked on a lot of doors for Measure V, and I talked to the community and listened to the community, and people are paying attention and they're not dumb. And they are frustrated with the idea that they are going to pass a tax that's going to go into the general fund, that could be used for any purpose in the future. There's no way to guarantee that it won't be, and that they're going to tax themselves to build housing when it primarily benefits the small cities to our north that keep adding jobs and refuse to build housing. Real housing solutions are going to have to come from Sacramento. We need a more equitable We need a more equitable distribution of tax revenue. We need to incentivize cities to build housing. We need to reduce some of our processes and fees that are getting in the way of building.
Jenny?
I support the premise behind the transfer tax, but I'm going to say that I would vote no on it. When we do things like giving corporate profits, bigger corporate profits to our developers, and then turn around the next week and propose a ballot measure to tax our residents of property sales at over $2 million, I can't in principle support that. The premise of it, it affects a small number of people, like 98% of the homeowners or the people in our city. But I also don't want to support anything that would make it harder for first-time buyers. I know $2 million sounds like a lot, but we're living in Silicon Valley. I also don't think, I'm worried about inflation. I think more and more houses will fall into that $2 million. So I'm in support of finding other ways. I'm not going to say I'm against taxes completely, but we passed Measure A, and I think that was pretty cool. That's $990 million that we voted to buy and build houses out of our own money for other people, so.
I will vote no on the transfer tax. One reason is, like Matt already mentioned that, because money is going to go to general fund, not design specific for affordable housing. And also, I believe affordable housing right now, it is a crisis for City of San Jose, because we need $150,000 affordable housing by 2035. So the whole issue is if we can put affordable housing as one category and design that for affordable housing, cut down the red tape, make sure they can get permit on time, and they don't have to wait for two, three years to get permit, they can have a time monitoring for how long they want, from the day they apply, when the day they can build and they can finish, and cut down the cost and make the house really affordable. And also, instead of build single houses, I guess this idea we had to educate, maybe we can build duplex, is two house in one spot, and they will save a lot of money between building and permit. Thank you.
I will also be voting no. A lot of the examples were already given here, but one of the biggest things that when I'm talking about process is again, the affordable housing process. Money, we already know, has already come into this bucket. We've already, we have not seen the results that was supposed to happen. So I'm not going to throw more money onto this issue until it's solved. Second, the fact that it is going to some type of general fund doesn't even guarantee the fact that it's going to be used for that. So that is, it just seems, it doesn't seem like it's all in the right place for that.
Moving on to the topic of mental health. Mental health services fall under the county's purview, but some city officials say resources seem to be significantly lacking to address the need. Do you support Laura's Law, pushed by current council member Johnny Camus, which would compel certain individuals to get treatment? What else should the county do to address the shortage in resources?
On the surface, from what I've read about Laura's Law, I am supportive of it. It usually goes, right now it's going through a very strict process to actually classify people with mental illness to get them the help that they need. So I'm for it.
I actually support Laura's Law, especially I'm in the medical field. Oh, sorry. Sorry. I actually support the Laura's Law, since I'm in the medical field. I know the 5150 actually lock up between 40 to 72 hours, but they release them out of hospital. So they actually are going to come back again, so it actually wastes more resource. So I like the Laura's Law. In fact, you can go from 5150 to 5250, up to 5350. It means we can do outpatient treatment for the mentally ill patient up to six months and get one more extension for one year. So I think during the whole treatment process for one year, and maybe we also can do some job training, help them to get some job. Especially right now, county actually bought two hospitals, especially San Luis Hospital down in Gero, out of almost nowhere, the hospital to start to building, we know they're not going to make it. So it's wonderful place to actually establish a mental facility, since I guess people should know we shut down Agno Hospital, so quite a lot of homeless actually come out of hospital industry. Thank you.
The thing about Laura's Law and the way Johnny Camus is presenting it, it's not a catch-all solution that's going to solve our homeless solution for mentally ill people. It's a very narrow section of our homeless that are mentally ill, that have been on a 5150, that have committed a crime, and that are of danger of themselves. So I am for it, but I do want to see the discussion that happens in front of the county. This is a decision that they make, and they're more well-informed on the capacity and how we can implement that. I think that just saying that we have 300 beds in O'Connor Hospital since we just purchased it is irresponsible without having the full capacity and the services available, and that is something that I would push for and that I hope that we do bring more of in.
So when we talk about Laura's Law, we're talking about the concept of conservatorship, which is something that many cities and counties around our state, from San Francisco to San Diego, have implemented. And in those cases, they've generally actually only addressed a few hundred people a year. And so I think it's a useful tool, it's a tool that I support. I think in very extreme cases, someone should be taken under the conservatorship of the state when it's necessary. And so I do support Laura's Law and other forms of conservatorship as one tool in the toolbox. But we have to also acknowledge that our mental health challenges are much broader than those most extreme cases, and that we actually need the facilities and the resources and the systems in place to support people when they're going through a mental health crisis. Many people will get care if it's high-quality and it's available to them, and we should keep that in mind. We also should acknowledge that many of our homeless individuals are the working poor who've moved into their cars and are living in shelters, and something like conservatorship isn't going to address the problem that they face.
All right. And we have time for one more question from the audience. Barb McNeil has lived and owned a home in District 10 for 43 years, and she's supporting Matt Mahan because she believes he's more fiscally responsible. Jenny, how do you respond to that comment, and how would you be a good steward of the public's money?
I was vice president in sales, marketing. I was a first employee of a startup company, and in that position, I was in charge of making sure budgets were met, developing timelines for product launches based on projections of sales. So I don't know if I've talked to Barbara or Neil about my policies around fiscal responsibility, but I'm a mom, I know how to make a dollar, a single mom, I know how to make a dollar stretch, and I think that's what I would do at City Hall. So I would say that I'm too worried about the fiscal responsibility of our city council and that we're going to be able to have a city that is going to thrive in the long run and ends up with a balanced budget. Every year, we have a balanced budget, and we also have surplus. I think a lot of people don't understand that. When I'm out at the doors, I'm hearing about, what are you going to do about our unbalanced budget? And we are balanced every year, we have to be.
What about you, Helen? Where's the light?
I actually managed urgent care in San Jose for 30 years, so I had to know how to balance a budget. I don't spend what you don't have. So another way to say, we had to figure out every item without wasting any tax dollars. So that's why how we can budget, we call balancing budget. And also, we hope we can save some for the rainy days.
I think fiscal responsibility is actually very important for many of the clients that I actually work with. The first thing I do is try to cut the fat in fees. So fiscal responsibility is very, very important to me. I mean, just looking at my campaign, I have raised $1,000, and now I'm sitting here with these great folks. So what I do is I use the resources that I have. But I believe that that does start with yourself first, and with that same philosophy and with that same process, that is what I look to bring to City Hall.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here, and thank you to everyone who came up.
Does Matt get to answer why he's fiscally responsible?
If you want to.
Yeah.
It's a very biased question without knowing what our platform was to be able to say that, so. Okay. Yeah, sure. What makes you?
Sure. I have made fiscal responsibility a centerpiece of my campaign. I've actually called for mandatory annual audits of our spending to make sure we are using our dollars as effectively as possible. I don't think we should always assume that what we did last year is going to work this year, that we're using our dollars to the best possible effect. When I knock on doors, people tell me that the cost of living is too high here. They don't want to just see every solution to every problem be more taxes and more regulations. We have to be smarter, we have to be more efficient. I've run a couple of companies, and I know how to manage a budget. And I think it's just, it's critical that we rebuild trust with voters. And so I appreciate the voters' comment and support, and I think it just demonstrates that our message is resonating, and we're out there trying to explain to people that we're going to be transparent, we're going to rebuild trust, we're going to use your tax dollars effectively, we're going to show you where every dollar goes, and be honest when those dollars aren't working the way that they should.
Can I have a little rebuttal on that, please? As a company that I brought from a million dollars to a $30 million company in five years, I understand that we can't spend more than we think we have, and even though we have a projection coming in. And I think part of the problem when I'm knocking on the doors is the trust issue is not there. I think it also has a lot to do with education and being transparent. I support what Councilmember Perez has been doing, when he sits down and he brings in his district to be involved in the budgeting process, and these are things that I will do. I'm representing the District 10. This isn't my budget to spend, it's the budget of my community and of my city.
Just a comment on that. I agree. I think a lot of it has to do with education, engaging voters, making sure people understand where their dollars are going, because that builds trust. But it's also about honesty, because we have not been clear enough that our budget is constantly and increasingly being eaten up by an unfunded pension liability that we have kicked the can down the road on. And I don't blame the workers, to be very clear, but we have gone 20, 30 years of kicking the can down the road and not being honest. Next year, 31% of our budget is going to go to backfilling that unfunded pension liability. We need to talk about our city finances like mature adults and be honest with the voters. Thank you.
All right. Well, on that note, thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
And thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. If you appreciate San Jose Spotlight's work to keep the community informed, please support our nonprofit newsroom by becoming a sustainable member with a donation as little as $5 a month.
Yes.
Learn more at sanjosespotlight.com, and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1794.61]